Good evening. We are here for the regular meeting of the Neutrona County Board of County Commissioners. It's Tuesday, August 20th, 2024, 5:00 p.m. The meeting's been called to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Laird?
Present. Here.
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 Here. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session for both personnel and threatened litigation.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved by Commissioner Laird, seconded by Commissioner Freel to move into executive session. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in executive session.
Counting the votes yet? When does it polls? 07? So hey, we've only got an hour and a half left. We've counted down the time. You're the only one on the board running for election.
All right, we're back from our executive session. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're back from our executive session. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any modifications to the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, make motion pull, uh, sub D, decision on sale of saddle string property for discussion and a decision at that point, but it needs to be off of, uh, off the consent for right now.
Okay, we'll move that to item A under Roman numeral six, contracts, agreements, and resolutions. Any other modifications to the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, uh, add resolution fifty-seven twenty-four authorizing the amended regional water system joint powers. So if we didn't have, I mean, I didn't know if we needed to do that or not.
It's on here.
Okay.
We shelved it on there.
Okay.
So we're good there.
Just wanted to make sure we had it covered.
Any other modifications? Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Mellon, segmented by Commissioner North. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, under Roman numeral six, contracts, agreements, and resolutions, item A is the decision on sale of saddle string property. Uh, Commissioner Mellon.
Yes, we received, uh, two bids with, that, uh, were within policy, uh, one without or did not follow policy of our resolution for selling property. I would take motion or make a motion to accept the bid, the high bid, uh, from, oh, what's his name?
Jim Arrowood.
Jim, yeah. Mr. Arrowood, uh, for the sale of that property.
Second.
It's been moved and segmented to accept the, uh, bid of Mr. James B. Arrowood to purchase lot two A, Webb Creek Ranches, uh, the saddle string property for the price of fifty thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Um, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, um, that motion passes and we'll be selling that property to Mr. Arrowood. Next item is the, the public hearing uh, for MS twenty-four dash zero seven. I will open the public hearing and, um, for the MS twenty-four dash zero seven request of Brian and Byron and Amber Coffey for approval of a major subdivision. Um, we have a staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Sean Gusterson, ECS engineers. Uh, with your permission, I would summarize again.
That'd be great.
Okay. Yeah, uh, as you stated, it's, um, Invermere subdivision brought forth by Byron and Amber Coffey. Uh, it makes, uh, one lot into, into three lots on this road. It is a major subdivision because of, uh, it's been previously platted. Uh, as far as public comments goes, uh, at the planning commission meeting, four folk spoke in favor, uh, one spoke in opposition. Uh, there were, uh, two emails received, one for and one against on this, on this property. Uh, planning considerations, the Roden Bridge says that they need to permit, uh, from Inver Road and that would be for that, uh, flag lot in the middle. Uh, the Conservation Service concert, uh, um, cautions that the soils aren't, uh, great for all, uh, dwelling classes. And, uh, the Health Department waived the chapter twenty-three requirement because we were on a, uh, public water system and there are already permitted septics in the area. And of course, the lots aren't large enough. Uh, no, no comment from fire, uh, GIS assessor or surveyor. And the surveyor did look at the plat and assessed it. So did the assessor, sorry. As I stated, the, uh, it was previously subdivided. That's why it's before he was a major subdivision. Uh, all criterias for approval, uh, are met. All the standards are met in this area. I will elaborate a little bit on criteria eight and nine. Uh, the ISD and finances in, in this case, uh, really the only improvements that we required is for that center lot, uh, to have, uh, an access to, uh, Inver Road so that we don't feel that they, that, we feel that standard is met also. The exhibits, uh, the plat that is in front of you, I think is fairly self-explanatory. A lot of times we, we do not recommend, uh, flag lots, but in this case, we feel it's appropriate. So, uh, and of course, the, uh, the planning commission, uh, forwarded a due pass recommendation and, uh, staff also supports, uh, approval of this, of this subdivision. So with that, I'd love to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gusterson? Commissioner Mellon.
Did the planning commission have any concerns or any, um, maybe mentioned, I missed it or something? Were there any, uh, conditions or, or concerns attached to this approval?
Uh, no, but there were not.
So it's, it is what it is?
It is what it is.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Laird.
I don't have any questions.
Um, Mr. Gusterson, I reviewed the, uh, comment in opposition. And I've reviewed the response to that. Are there any points that you think we should be aware of, um, with respect to that, uh, opposition?
Uh, I don't believe there are any as far as, uh, as approval may go. There were certainly some, uh, uh, some previous history, if you will, in that area and, and possibly some, uh, promises slash words that were not kept, but that's, uh,
But from a, and I'm, I'm sorry, but from a planning perspective?
From a planning perspective, no.
Okay, great. And, and you were kind of answering the question I wanted to ask, but I, I figured I'd cut to the chase, but yeah, from a planning perspective. Okay, I don't think we have any other questions, uh, for you.
All right.
Thank you. So at this time, uh, we will open it up for, uh, anyone speaking in favor of this, um, request for a major subdivision to please come forward. Good evening.
I'm Amber Coffey.
I'm Byron Coffey.
And we're here today to ask for approval of our subdivision of our property and answer any questions you may have.
Could I get, yeah.
Sorry.
People, it won't record if you're not speaking close enough to it. Thank you.
I'm Amber Coffey.
I'm Byron Coffey.
And we're here for the, um, request for approval of subdividing our property and here to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you for being here. Are there any questions for the applicants, Commissioner Laird?
The only thing I saw, I, I read everything and of course, the whole thing was in the paper as well. So, I'm a lawyer and so usually with respect to real estate matters, things have to be in writing to be binding. But I was just curious, this lady said that you bought this from her mother, I guess?
Correct.
And that you said you wouldn't subdivide it?
That's incorrect.
Okay. And then, we have the photos that where she said that, that, that you built your house where it obstructed their view?
So we have a modular home with a building permit on there, but there is, um, point eight miles in between her house and that structure.
And you're gonna sell part of this?
Correct.
And can you tell us, is that just gonna be another housing, uh, another house?
So we actually have a previous, a neighbor adjoining that wants to purchase the twelve acres. So he's basically just going to move property line. And we actually have two other neighbors that are interested in the ten acres and we're keeping the thirty-five, the thirty-three acres.
And, uh, the llama's gone?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and then there was some issues about, uh, I, I remember doing this when I was a teenager, driving my car too fast on dirt roads 'cause I liked to curl up the, the dust. I'm sure you guys don't approve of that, but that was one of the complaints, I guess. But nothing that I think affects my vote, but it's always nice to be good neighbors with everybody.
That is correct.
All right, I don't have anything else.
Any other questions for the applicants? I don't see any other questions. Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
Trying to be a good neighbor, uh, I did try to contact her, uh, over four times on the phone just so that we could have a discussion. And I honestly don't think that she would have been as, as angry if we would have had that conversation, but she would not answer the phone or text.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Second call for anyone wishing to speak in, uh, favor of the application, MS twenty-four dash zero seven, please approach. Third call for anyone wishing to speak in favor of the major subdivision, MS twenty-four dash zero seven. At this time, we will ask for anyone speaking, uh, wishing to speak in opposition, uh, to please, uh, approach the lecture. Second call for anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please approach. Third and final call for anyone wishing to speak in opposition to MS twenty-four dash zero seven. All right, there being no one else to speak in favor of or to, uh, or in opposition to, uh, we will declare the public hearing closed. At this time, I entertain a motion on the, uh, application.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion to approve MS twenty-four dash seven with all staff's findings and conditions.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Mellon, segmented by Commissioner Freel to approve the MS twenty-four dash zero seven, uh, major subdivision. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's been approved. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gusterson. At this time, we will open it up for public comment. Please come on down if you'd like to make public comment.
Good evening, Rosemary Saban, Natrona County resident. Um, I don't really have anything particular, but Judy was watching the work session earlier. And she thought maybe you guys could consider or talk to the city about, uh, the animal shelter, maybe doing a spay and neuter clinic to reduce the population of animals rather than, uh, producing a bunch of revenue to, uh, or taxing people for revenue to create a facility. Might be a more conservative approach if you think about it. Kind of surprised to hear you here, Peter. Uh, I would have thought you'd have been in Chicago at the convention. Thank you.
What convention?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissioners, I'm Greg Wager at seven thousand Coats Road in Casper, Wyoming. I, uh, I'm here tonight just to, just to let you know that I have made application and had my neighborhood meeting for a text amendment to the two thousand and two zoning resolution. I'll be coming forward at a public hearing later in this, in September. And we intend to have several people there. And through the paperwork, you'll find out what that's about. It basically removes, re-removes the C from MR one zoning, which, uh, then in fact, does not allow extracting mining in MR one zone. And my second issue, I just want to make mention that at my neighborhood meeting, I sent out nine hundred notices for that meeting at the cost out of my pocket of nine hundred dollars. And I think three meetings ago, or maybe two meetings ago, it was discussed here in front of this board that the applicant for the leases up there and eventual CUP, well, I say eventual CUP, uh, Mr. Truitt Prism Logistics had his neighborhood meeting. And at that neighborhood meeting, I asked him if that was part of his CUP process. He said, yes, it was part of his CUP process. So he started with a neighborhood meeting and went to a, and eventually we'll come to an application if he hasn't done that. And so at the same time, I asked him, I said, is, have you applied for an air quality permit through the LMO process? And he said, it's in process. I said, no, the question was, have you applied for that air quality permit? And he never did answer the question. And, uh, I know there was at least two commissioners there. And it was my understanding and at that meeting, two or three meetings ago, I, I think I've missed one since February. So I think Mr. Mr. Norris is the only one that's been to more commissioner meetings than I have. But at that meeting, it was, it was suggested that the two processes couldn't run concurrently. Well, if the air quality permit is in process and we've started the neighborhood meeting for the application of the CUP, we've started that process. In fact, they're running concurrently. And it's my understanding that there were just a handful of notices sent out, even though we did pack that neighborhood meeting. I didn't get one. And, uh, most of you know where I live, adjacent to the school section and to the proposed LMO. And albeit it was moved from section two to section thirty-six, yeah, I'm still very close to it. I did not get a notification for that meeting. I had to be notified from my neighbors. And several of them have expressed they didn't get notification either. So I'm not sure how many were sent out. But in fact, for my LMO process from the county, I received the letter the other day for the, for the two public hearings, one in front of the Pla- Planning and Zoning Commission and one in front of your commission. And, uh, we planned to- And we plan to have ample people there and the notifications were sufficient. As far as I can tell, there were there were almost 1,000 sent out, if not more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wager. Other public comment?
Now, Rick D., I live Midwest Heights subdivision. And they're turning it all into a dump. There's got to be a way to fix it. Mr. Lobdale, down on the corner, he bought his property, there wasn't a vehicle on it. And he bought it, contracted the deed. Now, there's just not full of all torn apart motorhomes. It's just junk. Up on the the other side of my, on my road, then the guy pulled in a motorhome. Mr. Nicolason had Lori go up and take pictures of it last, I think it was last year. And it's still there. You said it was, it's $750 to have a vehicle towed out. When before that motorhome was up there, there was one overhead camp trailer up there. If things would have been taken care of when that was up there, they wouldn't have had the motorhome. But the problem, one of the problems is, is that they're, they are not designated public roads, so they're private roads for public use. So if and when I talked to Mr. North last year, you said that, that road up there, Heights Boulevard, is do you have allowed parking? That's allowed parking for licensed vehicles, not torn apart junkyard. Well, now they've drug boats up there full of garbage, throw them off the trailers. And according to Lori in code enforcement, then she's taken pictures for years and years up there and sent out letters. And she just says, I get no response. And the guy up on the corner, he says, well, I don't know where my property's at for sure. I talked to planning and they said they can go on the computer and then know within inches. No more than a foot where the property lines are. So something should be done. Okay, it's $750 to tow off a vehicle. They're private roads. I've been trying to get an appointment with the county attorneys to see if there was some way that it could be made that you are responsible for keeping your road clean. And if not, okay, they have their junkyard, charge them $750 per vehicle per year. And beans, we get our water from Water None now. Then add it to their taxes at the end of the year. I went to Rocky Mountain Power and because the alleys are full of junk cars, everything. And then I'm not going to mention their names, but anyway, she told me, she's a hoagie. We can send out three letters and the third letter, if they don't comply, we shut their power off. That's a good idea, but the guy came out and took pictures of everything. And so two weeks went by and nothing happened. So I went down there and he said, well, I talked to my supervisor and beans, things have been a mess for so long. And if we made that subdivision clean theirs up, we'd have to make everybody. So we just aren't going to do nothing. I have, I have never known there to be a problem and you sit and wait for it to go away. It don't ever go away. It gets bigger. Lobdale, his lots down there, he's got 10 lots. And I think it was 2017 when the eclipse ones going on. Then he got this bright idea, he was gonna rent out lots to watch the eclipse. So he moved his junk off of his property onto the road, what's supposed to be a road. And that's where it's set for years. If nothing can be done, where do our taxes go? And I'm not the only one that lives in, out in the county. We can't get our roads fixed, maintain, nothing. I don't care. I've lived there all my life. If you don't have a four wheel drive and, no, I drive, you don't need to live there. But there just has to be something done about the garbage. There's people have garbage trailers that instead of taking them to the dump, they just go get another trailer. There's skunks, raccoons, God knows what all running around up there. I've been to the health department, nobody seems to care. Just out of sight, out of mind. You don't go there? Don't worry about it. But for the ones that live there, and the guy up on the corner, the one that had the pipe across the road a couple of years ago. And the sheriff's department says, well, there's nothing we can do about it. Well, yes, there is. Because even though it is a private road, you can gate it off. But you have to have it to where they can open the gate and go through and then shut it. That pipe was two foot around, 10 foot long. At the time, my mom, 90 year old, was living with me, a hospice patient. If she would have needed an ambulance, how are they going to move that pipe to get down there?
So I think you said that you were trying to get a meeting with our legal counsel?
Yeah.
Do you still want to meet with them to try and talk about options?
Yeah.
All right, I think we can set that up. Heather, do you have Rick's number or can we get your contact information?
I've had it. You've had it for years.
I know Lori, I know Lori has it. As we've at least Commissioner North and I have explained to you, these are difficult situations because we don't own it's a public road, right? But without the maintenance and with some of the other issues going on, it's tough and we have similar issues all over the county. So we'll see what we can do. But it's a tough spot the county's in.
That seems to be the problem because on the plat, it has never been designated public roads. So they are private roads for public use. So if there was a way you could make make the people responsible for the road in front of their house.
Well, get together with our legal counsel and see if there's some options. Thanks for coming. I I remember you coming. Seems like it was right around the first of the year. But thanks for coming back.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, have a good evening. Any others wishing to make public comment tonight?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Kurt Simpson, Homme Hills resident. I'd just like to mention that the sixth scent that Casper's voting on this, this year. I just don't appreciate the fact that as a county resident, I'm going to have no choice about paying it if they pass it. And yet I have no say so in whether or not they pass it. I'd have probably got outvoted anyway. That's not the point. I didn't have a say so and I don't appreciate that part of it. I think the county should have been allowed to vote on it also. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others wishing to make public comment? All right, we will move to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Laird.
Mr. Simpson, you need to direct that to your legislators. Because we don't make the law that allows for that. But I hear what you're saying because you live in another area. And the voting has been done by the or asked for by the city of Casper, which they have that. And now the citizens are going to decide, which is what we like happening, is the citizens decide whether there's a tax or not. With respect to Midwest Heights, I've been up here a couple of times and the roads are horrible. And I'm surprised you can even get down some of them with a four wheel drive. And I don't think an ambulance or a postal truck can get down there, but those are all privately owned. And the residents won't vote for any kind of a process where they would all be, have to be taxed on a yearly basis for those roads. Now with respect to blocking the roads with garbage and unusable things, I'm surprised that hasn't been enforced. And I do know the county has a cleanup fund to clean things up that get out of hand. So when you come in and speak to the county legal department, Ms. Duncan, whoever you speak to, you probably ought to bring some pictures so you can show them what it's like. Because until somebody goes out there, they don't really know how bad it is. And I've been out there and I I would sure like to do anything I could for all you all out there to help fix some of it. But we're strapped to with what our legal jurisdiction is, but hopefully we can get all that addressed. Selection night here in about another hour, the polls close. And so we'll we'll see who gets elected and who doesn't get elected. It's always an interesting situation. The gravel pit issue goes on. I don't know of any application been made for a CUP. Has one been made yet? Do you know? That one hasn't been made yet. I also heard that the air quality control portion of this hasn't been completed, but that was a few days ago. I heard that. What's happened in the past few days, I don't know. And so I know now more than ever, the courts are probably going to end up deciding most of this issue. Whatever stage anything happens because nothing's really come in front of us that we can vote on anyway. So it's always nice to see all you all here. I can't understand why so many people are on one side and so many people are on this side. From my side, this is the left, which I can understand. And this is the right, but from your point of view, that's the right. Or this is the right and you're the left. So anyway, have a good evening.
Commissioner North.
Well, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight and and for those that voted today, it is important, it is your right. And if you didn't vote, don't complain about the outcome. Midwest Heights, that, that has been an issue for a long, long time. When I was fire chief in Mills, that was a constant discussion that we had as far as being able to get in and out of there. So I'm very familiar with that area over there. And we are, we will look in that, into that continually and get with our code enforcement and legal counsel and see what we can do. And there's a couple of other options that we will look at and see, see if that'll work also. Not sure exactly what yet, but we'll see what we can do for finding out an answer for you. And we do appreciate you coming in. Thank you.
Commissioner Freel.
I was going to answer Rosemary's question before she decided to leave and take a pot shot at you, but they do spay and neuter clinics twice a year with Metro, and that's how they do keep the population down. So to answer Rose and Judy's question, nobody's trying to make any money off of you. They're doing exactly what your question was tonight, to keep the population down. That's it.
Commissioner Mellon.
Yeah, so as Commissioner Laird said, tonight we'll know about new commissioners or Commissioner. We'll see how it goes. Good luck to everyone on that. But to that point, and for y'all that have ever been up here or are up here, I don't think more apt words were ever spoken by a candidate that's running for this position. I don't know what's going on. No. Until you're sitting up here, you really don't. Until you've, until you're up here, there are things in the background that, that just had no idea. When I ran, I thought I had a pretty good idea. I had not a clue. Holy cow, it was almost two years before I started to get my feet under me for this county commissioner gig. Yeah, no, it, it, it is a position that you don't, don't realize everything, the minutia in the background, all the different meetings that you're required to go to, the different, just everything. And with that being said, to all you that ran this year, good luck. I do do truly wish you good luck. I hope it is what, what you think it is. When you get in, maybe you'll be, you'll surprise me and know more than I did when I came in. But from everything that everybody's ever said, it's, it's a whole different animal up here. But with that being said, I, I hope that we can continue to do the good work for the county and the citizens. So good luck to everybody.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thanks to those who are voting. Thanks to those who are participating in the process. Thanks to the candidates who are willing to throw their hat in the ring and to serve the public. I'm proud to serve with these gentlemen, and I know without question, without a doubt that they are looking out for their constituents. We don't agree on everything. We share different perspectives, but that's what I think the public wants and that's what the public needs is for there to be debate and full consideration of the issues that are presented so that we make the best decisions for the public. I think, I think we're doing that. And I think we've made a lot of good progress this year. And I think we're going to continue to do that for the remainder of the year. And we'll continue to do that with whatever the composition of the commission is after the first of January. Thanks, everybody, and we will call the meeting adjourned. Have a good evening.